The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and the Times on January 3, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Please join me in a flag salute.
Let's give the greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Ready others? Yeah, you can all shuffle around after.
Okay. Some of you may be wondering why the Board Secretary is acting as the Chairman of this meeting. At this time, this is the organization meeting of the Board. The Board has no President or Vice President at this point. First order of business is going to be to relay the election results and then swear in members who are elected in November. So back on November 8, voting was held in this community. We only had representatives up for vote in Hopewell Township. There were 12 polling districts in Hopewell Township. There were 15,144 registered voters, and of that, 5,016 ballots were cast for a total turnout in Hopewell Township of 33.1%. Elected to three-year terms, there were three individuals who were elected with 2,681 votes, Andrea Brooks, with 2,423 votes, Anita Williams-Galliano, and with 2,180 votes, Pamela Liliston was elected. They were all elected to three-year terms. There was also a one-year unexpired term on the ballot, and that was won by Drew Kapadia with 2,113 votes. Okay, so we are now going to welcome those four individuals to come to the podium to take their oath of office.
Is it on?
Yep.
I was wondering if I can make a statement before.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So serving on the Hopewell Valley Regional School District's Board of Education has brought me great pride. I am not only a graduate of the district, but also one who attended my entire public school career from kindergarten to 12th grade. This community has impacted not only me, but also my parents, as they are district graduates, and chose to raise me here. In turn, I also raised my own daughters here, as they are graduates of the phenomenal district. It is an understatement to say that I have a passion and vested interest in this district, its staff, its students, and its success. While serving on the Board, I have had the pleasure of working alongside some amazing professionals. Together, we navigated the post-pandemic environment, giving our students and staff a safe place to work and learn. And after having the same superintendent for 12 years, we conducted the all-important superintendent search, which appointed the one and only dynamic Dr. Therese, where we had the unique opportunity to make history as we served together. All this being said, it is with great regret that I am advising the Board and the district administration that my recent personal circumstances have changed, which prevent me from continuing my service on the Board and accepting this term. I have no doubt that the work we all have been doing will continue, and that Hopewell Valley Regional School District will continue to be the trailblazer it always has been, setting the standard for the surrounding districts. I would like to thank each and every Board member and key administrator for being the professionals that they are and keeping the success of our students at the forefront of all that they do. Thank you.
At this time, I would ask the other four to get back to the podium. We'll come a little closer if you can pick up the microphone. Okay. I, state your name.
Anita Williams-Galliano.
Pamela Liliston.
Drew Kapadia.
Do solemnly swear-
To solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people. So help me God. I-
Pamela Liliston.
Anita Williams-Galliano.
Drew Kapadia.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education, and am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 1941. I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Right there on the bottom. Okay. Please join me in welcoming these three individuals, two of them back to the Board and one of them to the Board. Now, before you guys, before you step away, in the past, we've allowed some time to take pictures. I'm not sure if you brought any family members you want to have pictures taken with the podium.
We'll take pictures with Drew's family.
Okay. Take it for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Genovese.
Here.
Drew Kapadia. Here. Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Here.
At this point, I, as Board Secretary, recall the nominations for office of Board President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking to state their selection for Board President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote- Of yays, nays, or abstentions. Once a president has been selected, I will step down as temporary Chair of this meeting and pass the gavel to the newly-elected president, who will then conduct the election of office of Vice President in the same manner. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to take nominations for office of Board President.
I'm gonna nominate Anita. I don't see any reason for us to not have the same president as we had last year.
Are there any other nominations for President of the Board? Okay, seeing none, I will close the nominations for President. I'm gonna do a voice vote, as I said, for President. All those in favor of Anita Williams-Galliano returning as President of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Anita, come back and take your gavel.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate that vote of confidence. I would now like to open nominations for the Office of Board of Vice President. Board Vice President, excuse me. I will be nominating and putting forth Jacqueline Genovese, Dr. Genovese. Are there any other nominees? Okay, seeing none. Oh, voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Welcome, Dr. Genovese. Do a seat swap. Okay, so I will turn to Dr. Therese for any reports.
I'm gonna keep my statements brief. One, I want to thank Ms. Driver for her service, and she's gonna be sorely, sorely missed. I appreciate serving with you. I also appreciated setting history with you, and I wish you the best. And I know you're gonna stay in touch and let us know how you're doing. Also, I wanted to share in my last superintendent's update, there were some changes to the strategic planning dates. I will publish those again for everyone in my update on Friday. It will be the 16th, January 16, February 6, and March 12, all beginning at 6 o'clock in the community room at the high school, and the media center. Cafeteria? Okay, so we're gonna be in that one space. You do not have to attend all three of these sessions. The last person that was gonna do it, Jessie, who retired, wanted the people to say they would do all three sessions, or four, it was going to be. Now it's only three, and you don't need to attend all three. So if you can do one, or two, or how many ever you want to do, you're absolutely welcome. I had about 145 people sign up. I'm sure that everyone won't show up on all three days, but the more, the merrier. And you don't have to have kids in the district to participate. So if you know any community members who want to be a part of it, please pass the information along to them. I would like to sort of have accounts, so we don't go over the fire code. I think we'll be fine, though. But please keep us in mind for those three dates. And then we'll be presenting that strategic plan that we come up with as a community to the Board by June. So that's all I have for updates, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Okay, well, I don't have anything prepared, but I do also want to just say Happy New Year to all of the Board and also to the community, and also my heartfelt thanks to my running partner and my Vice President from last year. You will be missed, and I know you have a mission and education that is not over yet. So I acknowledge what you have ahead of you. And also, I just want to acknowledge Drew for joining the Board, saying yes to this opportunity, one of the youngest that I know of in our district, to step up and say yes to being on the Board. And I think it would be a disservice to him and this monumental moment to not mention him and the work that he did to both participate prior to leaving the district as a senior and going on to Boston, but coming back and being willing to do the work and extra work it's gonna take to be present for this Board. So, thank you. Thank you. As well, Pamela, congratulations. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to do our ethics training, and at this point, I'll ask you to step up to the committee. Okay. All right. So, for the community, this is really the beginning for all new members and for us to be reminded of our ethics training for the year, and you can hold us accountable as you learn along with us.
Okay, so prior to Paul getting started, all of the Board members were handed a copy of the Code of Ethics and an acknowledgement form that I needed you to sign. So if you could pass those forward here.
That's not gonna work. Yeah, that's not gonna work.
I'll do it for you, yeah.
So that it's clear that it's the original and not a photo copy.
Good evening. This is a unique experience for me. This is the first organization meeting I've ever attended dressed casually, but I was in New York today and got back too late to put a suit on, so my apologies. But let's get started, since I think I'm standing between you and a German. So let's look at Ethics for School Officials. So the School Ethics Act, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but basically, the key of it is that the conduct of Board members really has to be beyond reproach. You are representatives of the public, and you may not violate the public trust or create the impression among the public that the trust is being violated, and that is a key factor in many school ethics commission's decisions, is that it's not that you are necessarily violating the public trust, but it may create that impression. Next slide, sir. Keep going. So to whom does the School Ethics Act apply? Board members, managerial employees, or officers of the School Boards Association and school administrators, such as your business administrator, your superintendent, your principals. There are two parts to it. There is a statutory provision that has conflict of interest provisions, and then there is a Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics applies only to Board members and not to your administrators. So, why do we review the Ethics every year? We're required to. In the regulations, NJA 6A is the set of state regulations that govern schools, and it requires that we must annually discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics at a regular scheduled public meeting, which is what we're doing tonight, or at least you're listening to me discuss it. So the School Ethics Act, there's two sections, as I mentioned. The first one is the Prohibited Acts, which conflict of interest, and then the next one is the Code of Ethics. Next. So the prohibitions, we're gonna go just very briefly through them. They're basically conflict of interest prohibitions. You may not have an interest in a business organization or any business or transaction with the district. You may not use or attempt to use your position to secure and warrant it privileges for yourself, members of your immediate family, or others. And that "or others" is very broad. And that is basically any human being is an "or other." And what we'll see later is that the word relative does not appear in here anywhere. They do talk about immediate family, and that is defined elsewhere in the statutes. And then you may not basically have any direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair your objectivity or independence of judgment. Next. So you may not have any interest or represent any person, party, other than the Board in connection with any matter, which means you may not represent any outside persons. One individual that you may represent, you have the right, as a parent, to act on behalf of your child the same manner as any other parent, but that's very important to keep in mind, the same manner as any other parent. You never can forget that you are always viewed as a Board member, and even when you come in as a parent, it's known that you're a Board member, and that can have an intimidating effect on the staff. And you have to be very, very sensitive, because it's very easy to inadvertently cross that line, and you can never, ever use your position on the Board to try to get something on behalf of a child or other family member in the district. That is an automatic violation. But again, you have to be very sensitive to the very fact that you just can't walk in and be seen as a parent anymore. You come in, you're not just a parent, you're a Board member, and the staff knows that, and they know that you have a direct pipeline to the superintendent and to the rest of the Board. So again, you need to be very sensitive to that and be very careful to just keep your parent hat on and be very cordial and careful when you deal with staff. And the less you do that, the better, frankly, so that you avoid potential issues. Next. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of the children. That is your purpose. That is why you're here. The purpose of this Board is not to run this district. You have administrators who do that. The purpose of this Board is to set policy and to see that the schools are well-run. And your mandate is you are here for the children. You're not here for any particular group of children or any particular group of parents, any particular viewpoint. You are here for the educational welfare of every child in this district, and that you will seek to develop and maintain schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of ability, race, creed, color, sex, or social standing. Next. You must confine your Board action to policymaking, which is the key function of the Board, to set policy, planning, and appraisal, and to help frame policies and plans only after you've consulted by those who will be affected by them. Next. So Board members formulate programs and methods through a variety of actions. There are committees. You have ad hoc or standing committees. You may have ad hoc committees created for specific purposes. You have your basic standing committees, such as policy, finance, et cetera. Next. Discussion and action at a duly-convened meeting. Okay. And you may not administer the schools, as I mentioned. You, together with your fellow Board members, are here to see they are well-run, and you have a responsibility to carry that out, but you are not the administrators, and it's very easy sometimes to run afoul of that and start to try to micromanage when that's not your role. That often happens. Next. So to prove a violation of the administration of the schools, basically what the Code requires is that a direct order was given to school personnel, or the Board member became directly involved in activities or functions that are the responsibility of school personnel or the day-to-day administration of the district. Next. So for example, a violation was found where a Board member asked for copies of SAT reports, inspected lockers in the boys' locker room, and instructed staff under supervision of students. It's not a Board member's role to go into buildings and to start inspecting the facilities, unless you're doing it as part of a committee that you've been charged by the Board to do. The key thing to keep in mind is you have no individual authority as a Board member. Your authority exists in this room, at this table, when you are convened at a regular meeting. Outside of that, you have authority to act on behalf of the Board and committee structure, using the committees, but you have no individual authority as a Board member. And you need to really keep that in mind, that your role is to serve on the Board and to function with the Board as a whole, as a team, and not to basically try and go off and do particular things on your own, unless you've been specifically delegated and directed by the Board to do so. Next. Individual Board members may not give direct orders to the administration, so you cannot go to an administrative member and say, "Do this, do that." So how do we carry out, then, the desire on the part of Board members to basically implement various policies or procedures? Next. So you may ask questions of administration relative to the process. Certainly, you can ask questions. That's your role, is to make sure you understand what's being recommended. You may engender conversations at the meeting regarding a recommended action. If there's a motion, there's discussion on that motion. You can always raise questions there. That's healthy. That is the Board engaging in the process of making sure it understands, as a group, why something is being recommended and what that action is going to be. Next. You may ask the Board President to return the recommended action to the committee. So for example, if the Board, or at least the majority of the Board, feels that it's not ready to vote on a particular matter, that it wants more information or further review by the committee, that, under Roberts' rules, is technically called a motion to commit. That refers to the topic, not to the Board member. So you make a motion to commit and send it back to the committee. Next. And the Board or committee may direct the administration. Now, this is key, because the Board or committee, it's not individual Board members, to perform certain tasks, analyses, et cetera. They have to be consistent with policymaking, planning, and appraisal, but you can ask for specific information, various data that you're looking for with respect to instructional results, or policies, or finances. That's your role. You can certainly ask for that information, and you're entitled to that information. One of the things that, you know, just about every Board has a new business section on its agenda, and with all due respect, I give you, this is not so much ethics, but a lot of years of practical advice. There are Board members in many districts who will try to bring up different topics in the new business concept. And I always think of, Robert Heinlein had a great line in one of his novels. He said, "Never try to teach a pig to sing. It wastes your time and annoys the pig." And basically, you know, people are here, you know, not here, but I'm talking about in general, at a Board meeting, throwing out different concepts for new business, and really, all they're accomplishing is making the meeting run later than it should. The area to bring those ideas forward is through your committees. That's what they're there for. So if there's something you want to pursue, you're really better off doing that through the committee structure than trying to throw something out of the blue at a Board meeting. And if you're not on the committee, ask that committee chair to bring that up. If you're not getting results with that approach, then at that point, perhaps, you bring it to the full Board. But just a little practical kind of advice from many meetings that I've sat, you know, wanting to stick pencils in my eyes, frankly. Next. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. So you cannot promise anyone anything, and you have to be very careful. If somebody comes to you and starts talking- inspected lockers in the boys' locker room, and instructed staff under supervision of students. It's not a board member's role to go into buildings and to start inspecting the facilities, unless you're doing it as part of a committee that you've been charged by the board to do. The key thing to keep in mind is you have no individual authority as a board member. Your authority exists in this room, at this table, when you are convened at a regular meeting. Outside of that, you have authority to act on behalf of the board and committee structure, using the committees, but you have no individual authority as a board member. And you need to really keep that in mind, that your role is to serve on the board and to function with the board as a whole, as a team, and not to basically try and go off and do particular things on your own, unless you've been specifically delegated and directed by the board to do so. Next. Individual board members may not give direct orders to the administration, so you cannot go to an administrative member and say, "Do this, do that." So how do we carry out, then, the desire on the part of board members to basically implement various policies or procedures? Next. So you may ask questions of administration relative to the process. Certainly, you can ask questions. That's your role, is to make sure you understand what's being recommended. You may engender conversations at the meeting regarding a recommended action. If there's a motion, there's discussion on that motion. You can always raise questions there. That's healthy. That is the board engaging in the process of making sure it understands, as a group, why something is being recommended and what that action is going to be. Next. You may ask the board president to return the recommended action to the committee. So for example, if the board, or at least the majority of the board, feels that it's not ready to vote on a particular matter, that it wants more information or further review by the committee, that, under Roberts' rules, is technically called a motion to commit. That refers to the topic, not to the board member. So you make a motion to commit and send it back to the committee. Next. And the board or committee may direct the administration. Now, this is key, because the board or committee, it's not individual board members, to perform certain tasks, analyses, et cetera. They have to be consistent with policymaking, planning, and appraisal, but you can ask for specific information, various data that you're looking for with respect to instructional results, or policies, or finances. That's your role. You can certainly ask for that information, and you're entitled to that information. One of the things that, you know, just about every board has a new business section on its agenda, and with all due respect, I give you, this is not so much ethics, but a lot of years of practical advice. There are board members in many districts who will try to bring up different topics in the new business concept. And I always think of, Robert Heinlein had a great line in one of his novels. He said, "Never try to teach a pig to sing. It wastes your time and annoys the pig." And basically, you know, people are here, you know, not here, but I'm talking about in general, at a board meeting, throwing out different concepts for new business, and really, all they're accomplishing is making the meeting run later than it should. The area to bring those ideas forward is through your committees. That's what they're there for. So if there's something you want to pursue, you're really better off doing that through the committee structure than trying to throw something out of the blue at a board meeting. And if you're not on the committee, ask that committee chair to bring that up. If you're not getting results with that approach, then at that point, perhaps, you bring it to the full board. But just a little practical kind of advice from many meetings that I've sat, you know, wanting to stick pencils in my eyes, frankly. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. So you cannot promise anyone anything, and you have to be very careful. If somebody comes to you and starts talking to you about something, you cannot promise them anything more than that, you know, ideally, they should bring it to the superintendent. At most, you would say is, "I will bring it to the superintendent on your behalf." That's as far as it goes, and it ends there. Next. So factual and evidence of this is that if the board member made personal promises or took action beyond the scope of duties, there has to be the potential to compromise the board, and the SEC will sometimes, not sometimes, will frequently find, that if it's a significant enough action, that that does have the potential to compromise the board, because you're basically making a promise and seeking, in the eyes of the person you're promising, to bind the board, to carry out something that you have no authority to promise. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to any special interest or partisan political groups or use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. Independent judgment. You are independent thinkers. You have your own thoughts. You are responsible for, basically, your own decisions and your own course of action. That you may not surrender that. That doesn't mean you can't take input from special interest groups. Certainly, you can do that, but you cannot surrender your judgment to them, and you cannot basically go along with something just because a particular group wants it. You may have similar ideas with that group, and you may very well independently come to that conclusion, but that's the key. It's your independent judgment. You are not here to represent any group other than the children of the district. This is huge. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all of the matters, I will provide accurate information. Start with the latter one, too. So even if it's not confidential, if you're putting any information out there, it must be accurate. If you provide information about any topic in the district, and assuming it's not confidential and you're able to do it, and we'll talk a little later about what that looks like, you have to be very careful that what you put out there is accurate, and it's not either, even if it's mistaken, it's not incorrect or misleading. Confidentiality is critical. You will hear things in closed session that pertain to students, they'll pertain to legal matters, they'll pertain to employees, a variety of areas where, by law, the board is permitted to discuss these items in executive session and not to make them public, and making them public often will result in damage and can potentially be life-threatening damage or injury to students or to staff. So you really need to keep whatever occurs behind closed doors confidential, not discuss it with the spouse or anyone else, and basically, by no means, you know, reveal that to anyone outside of the Board of Education. Keep going. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. You cannot attack school personnel, certainly. That doesn't mean you can't question. As I said, you can ask for information. You can question why a recommendation is being made or why we're doing a particular course of action, but you must be supportive of your administration. That's part of your role. So there, if there's evidence that you took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel and the performance of their duties, would be a violation of that section. Next. All complaints. If someone comes to you with a complaint, you cannot discuss it. You have to refer to the superintendent. You can act on them at a public meeting only if there's not been an administrative solution. If someone is dissatisfied, they can really, at that point, bring it to the board, and the board can deal with it, but you don't do that individually. That becomes a board matter. So the Code doesn't say how that's to be referred to the chief school administrator. There's two ways to do it. You can either make a referral yourself, or you can suggest to the member of the public that that person should go directly to the CSA. Either way is acceptable. Generally, what, to some extent, it may be a judgment call on your part, depending on how serious or how time-critical the matter is. The safest thing is always to suggest that the constituent go to the chief school administrator, but you certainly can provide that information to the superintendent. Next. So who can file a complaint? School ethics complaint is a complaint filed against a school ethics official that there's been a violation of either the Act or the Code of Ethics, and anyone can do that. Anyone can file a complaint. Next. There's a six-month statute of limitations, so you can't file a complaint after six months. Well, you can file it, but it'll get thrown out. And we have the School Ethics Commission. That is the only entity that can determine whether a school official's conduct violated the Act. Anyone can request an advisory opinion from the SEC about their own or somebody else's proposed course of conduct. Those are advisory. They're not binding, but they are an indication of the SEC's thinking of how they would rule on a matter if it were to come to them as a complaint, and it's very persuasive, because if you follow the advice of an advisory opinion, they're going to be pretty hard-pressed later to find that either that you violated the Act, or if they do decide that it was a violation, they're not going to penalize you, because you're following their advice. Any school official may request that from the SEC about their own conduct, so if you have a question, it's often a good idea, if it's a close issue, to submit a request for an advisory opinion from the SEC. You can do that. We can always assist with that in terms of that, and if it's another school official, because you have the right also, anybody can file and ask about another school official, you have to copy that school official. Also, the SEC has ruled that they have the only authority over board members. A Board of Education cannot police its own members. The only authority a Board of Ed has over its members is if a member misses three consecutive meetings, the board can direct that member to show cause why the member should not be removed, and if the board decides that there's not really good cause for missing the three meetings, it can actually vote to remove the member, who can then appeal that to the Commissioner of Education. That's the only action a board can take on its membership. Everything else goes to the School Ethics Commission. So there are sanctions for violations of the Act. One is a reprimand, which is, some people cynically say it's a slap on the wrist, but it's still a public reprimand that is embarrassing. Censure is a little more of a, it's like a reprimand on steroids. It gets published, it gets read in public. It's a little more of a, and it's just more of a severe consequence. They can suspend a member from the board for a period of time, or ultimately, if it's severe enough, they can remove a board member. It doesn't, by the way, stop a member from running again. If they remove them, they can run later. Just very briefly, the financial disclosures. New board members must file within 30 days, so our new members are going to be given financial disclosure forms to fill out. All of the returning members file before April 30th, and basically, it's a financial disclosure where you have to list all your immediate relatives, any financial conflicts of interest, or potential conflicts of interest, and those disclosure statements are public records. Next. Free speech issues. Fact is that because you're on the board doesn't mean you've given up your First Amendment rights. You have a right to express yourself. However, as I said earlier, you may not disclose information that's inaccurate, confidential, which has the potential to compromise the board. Next. Members should not publicly criticize the staff. That's always not a wise thing to do. If there's particular criticisms, that really needs to occur behind closed doors. You may not represent your personal opinion as the position of the board, and in all formal expressions, you must, you must, this is critical, have a disclaimer. You must state that you are speaking not as a member of the board, that you are speaking as a private citizen. The opinions expressed are those of you alone, and they do not necessarily represent those of the board, and you have to have all of those elements in the disclaimer. Next. Here's a sample, which is available to you. Basically, it says that, that, you know, "I'm speaking on my own behalf and not on behalf of the board, and these represent my own personal opinions." Next. So there's been a number of cases, this is one of them, addressed in Randolph Board of Education, where, in this particular case, the board member wrote an op-ed endorsing candidates for an upcoming election. He included part of this disclaimer. He said, "I'm writing this on my own behalf. These are my own opinions." He did not include the other part, which is that this is not endorsed by the board, and these are not the board's opinion. And he used a lot of words in his endorsement, talking about "we," and "we did this," and "we did that," and it basically led, clearly led to an impression, the way he wrote it, that the board was, in fact, really sort of part of this endorsement. So there was a little discrepancy over the outcome in terms of the discipline. The ALJ, the Administrative Law Judge, suggested a reprimand. The commission imposed the penalty of censure. The commissioner of ed has the final say in all of these cases, and the commissioner reduced it back to a reprimand, since at least there was an attempt to partially disclaim it. There have been subsequent cases that have said that even if you have the disclaimer, there may be times when that's not even enough, that you may create an impression on the public, even though you're saying wink, wink, nod, nod, this is my opinion, where you may give an impression that the board is behind you in endorsing this. So you have to be very careful in making public expressions, and probably, if you're going to do it, it's a wise idea to check before you go out and put something in public that may wind up getting you in hot water. Next. We have a lot of advisory opinions that came down this past year. These are in no particular order. Just go through them quickly, just so you're aware of them. Again, these are, and actually, most of these were actually other board members who submitted the question regarding a different board member, who typically, most of these cases didn't respond. So the SEC said, "Okay, we'll just go with what you submitted us. You told the board member, and that's enough." So this one, the mother-in-law of a board member was employed in the district as an aide and a regular substitute, and so the question became, you know, is this person a relative for purposes of disqualifying the individual from any involvement in the superintendent's evaluation or matters involving the superintendent? And basically, what they said is, in March, the SEC said, "We adopted a revised regulation," and they amended the definition of relative under their code, under the School Ethics Code, "to be the same as what we already have under the nepotism policy, which comes from the accountability regulations, which is a different section of the regulations dealing with their business operations." So now, the two definitions are congruent, and under that revised regulation, a mother-in-law is a relative, and as we'll see in a minute, it basically comes down to, it's your immediate relatives and your spouse's immediate relatives. And so because the mother-in-law is a relative, that board member cannot participate in discussions relating, and votes relating to the superintendent, any principal search, selection interviews, collective negotiations, personnel committee discussions, staff annual contract, pretty much anything that might possibly involve this person. Next. Then another one was, a child was a student employee in the district after-care program. And again, if you're dealing with the situation where you have an immediate family member, which a child is a relative, and that person is employed and is theoretically somewhere in that chain of command, then you may not participate at all in any evaluation of the superintendent, discussion of contract, anything pertaining to the superintendent employment or evaluation is off-limits for you. In this case, it was okay that the student did it. They didn't find any problem with the fact that it was a board member's child who was serving in that, because their policy, which you're permitted to do by the regulation, excluded student employees from the nepotism policy. So if you have that provision in your policy, it is okay to hire a board member's child as a student employee, but because, even though it was a summer program rather than after-care program, and was not directly under the supervision of the administration, there was a teacher that was hired to serve as kind of the after-school director, and because of that, they held that that involved the district and the chain of command, and therefore, this board member had to completely abstain in the same manner as if this child were, you know, an employee in the district, a relative employed in the district. Next. Can a board member, a board president with a child instructional aide, child-in-law instructional assistant, it's all in the family here, and coach in the district, and then a child teacher in a neighboring school district, and the vice president, although it turned out later that was incorrect, they submitted the question, and they said it was the vice president who had a spouse in the district, be involved in the appointment to and serve on board committees? And so they said, "Well, the facts were not correct initially. The vice president did not have a spouse. There was a different board member who had a spouse." So, but what they said here is very interesting. They said, "The board president, because of that conflict, cannot choose any committee members or be on any committee involving the ed association, anything related to the superintendent, personnel negotiations, curriculum instruction, finding, I don't know what's left." The board vice president, then, who did not have a spouse employed, would then choose the committee members and could serve as the ex officio member. And then the other board member who did have a spouse, of course, is also similarly restricted. But that was really fascinating, that they went that far to say that, you know, because of this conflict, you may not even appoint the committee members. That's how strict they're taking this. Next. Can a board member's company serve as a subcontractor on the upgrade of tennis courts? This was a shared service agreement between the township and the board. They find that it would not violate the Ethics Act if the company bids on and is awarded a contract with the town, but the board member may not participate in discussions or votes with review of the contractors. It is preferable that someone other than the member physically perform the required work. Next. If for some reason it's absolutely essential that the, next slide, that the board member do that, you have to be zealous, and remember, you're not representing the board. No authority over district personnel cannot receive any unwarranted privilege or advantage. Any issues that are encountered, you may not act to resolve them, and before arriving on property, advise the superintendent. Again, just an illustration of, you know, where they're coming from in terms of your roles, where you have a potential conflict of interest situation. Next. Okay, now, here's another one. Here's an interesting one. So this is a sister-in-law. Now, before, we saw sister-in-law, a mother-in-law. Okay, now we have a sister-in-law, spouse's sister, and the board member participated in negotiations involving the superintendent. Again, sister-in-law in this context, because it's the spouse's sister, is a relative, and we'll see in a minute where that changes in other contexts. But, so because it's the spouse's sister, the board member is prohibited from involvement in discussions and votes. Next. Now, here's a child residing at an out-of-state college, returns to the family during college breaks, works as a per diem substitute. Again, this is an immediate family member, maybe hired as a per diem sub, because, again, the board was permitted to and did exclude per diem subs from the nepotism policy. But if you hire the child and he becomes a member of the association, then the member would be prohibited from, again, contract negotiations, anything related to the superintendent. Next. Board member sees spouse works in the school district conflicted with respect to all issues involving the superintendent, including the evaluation. Therefore, no access to the contents, results, or the finalized evaluation, even after it's been completed. Totally excluded from the process, may not see it at all. No greater rights than any other member of the public. Next. Okay, now, here's a different sister-in-law. Here's a sister-in-law who's married to your brother, okay? Not your wife's sister. Secretary to the middle school principal, and now, they're looking for a new superintendent, and guess who's a candidate for the superintendency? Middle school principal. So again, here, your brother's spouse is not a relative or immediate family member, but as we said before, anybody can be an "other," you know, quote-unquote, "other," and she is an "other," as they say. So you may not use your official position to secure an unwarranted privilege or employment for the sister-in-law. So she's not your relative, she's not your immediate family member in, by definition of the statute, but you still have that same problem of, she's working for the principal, middle school principal, and this person's in the running to be the superintendent. So they basically say, because of that, you can't be involved in the search process at all, because it could create an impression among the public. Again, this comes back to what we talked about before. Even if it's not a direct violation, it creates the impression, or could create the impression that the trust is being violated, so therefore, you couldn't, that board member could not participate in deliberations. Next. So again, the key distinction here, it is the marriage that determines whether an individual's regarded as a relative. Marriage does not expand the pool of relatives, because the brother married, and so there wasn't an issue there. The issue is only where it's your spouse's relative. As we say, you marry the family. So the marriage itself does not expand the breadth of the board members' relatives for purposes of the statute and reg. Next. Obviously, you can't read this, but it's there if you, again, get a footbigger copy, and you can also find this. This is actually directly extracted from that advisory opinion, and they've published this a number of times, and what it is, is it's a list of pretty much every relative combination you could come up with, and whether or not that basically creates a conflict of interest for you because they're a relative. So it's actually pretty handy. They've done that to try to, right, yeah, there's like, there's pretty much most of the, most of the different parameters that you could come up with, and it basically tells you whether or not there's a relative conflict there. So next, Advisory Opinion 0323. Newly acted board member, retired New York City administrator, a special ed teacher. Can that person become a special ed advocate? The CPAG there, this begs the question of why the CPAG, which is supposed to be an advisory body, is training advocates, but that's besides the point. But that's besides the point. But they said absolutely not, you can't do that. I mean, you feel free to do that in some other school district, but the public may view the role as an advocate to be in substantial conflict. And in fact, the, even in the submission, the board member acknowledged as much by saying this would often be, as you see here, in opposition directly or indirectly to the district staff and administration, could reasonably be expected to prejudice independence of judgment, and really is a negative impact on the district. So that was held to be not permissible. Next. Spouse is a member of the local governing body. Can the spouse participate in matters related to a school resource officer? So here you have a board member whose husband is on the town council. And the district has got a shared service agreement with the council for an SRO in the school. And it would be a conflict of interest there to vote on any matter. They view it similar to a matter involving the spouse's employer. Even if it's a perceived personal or financial involvement, it could violate the public confidence. And they said whether the councilperson should also recuse himself or herself is outside of their scope, because that's not, you know, that's a municipal matter, that's a different body that governs that. And quite frankly, I will tell you that the ethics provisions governing municipalities are much less restrictive than the ones governing boards of education. Next. Can a board member, and this is the term they used in the request, lunch lady, lunch aide, they call her a lunch lady. So she worked for years as a food service vendor for several years in the district, then she got elected to the board. She said, is it a conflict of interest for me to continue to serve as a lunch aide? And they said, yes, it would be. Even if her interaction was very limited, because she really had very little interaction with district staff, she's still subject to supervision from senior leadership. And even if it would be remote, it's enough to raise it to the level of a conflict. So they suggested that that person should discuss reassignment to a different district, and of course, must recuse herself from any discussions concerning the employer. Next. Can a board member vote to refuse to implement the learning standards for comprehensive health? We're going to see a little later that there was a case where some board members refused to vote for the health curriculum. And there was a little result there, which was that in order to prove that that's a violation, there has to be a decision either from the administrative law judge and commissioner of education or court, holding that to be the case. So the Ethics Commission can't make an independent determination of that. So what they're saying here in the advisory opinion is, we're not aware of any decisions that have come out on this, but if they were to come out and hold that, in other words, if the commission were to say that you violated the statute by failing to vote for the health curriculum, then that could be a violation of the Code of Ethics. But to date, you know, that has not occurred. The commissioner, the SEC also observed that if the board ultimately refused to implement the required standards, or change the language from an opt-out to an opt-in health curriculum, which some boards have talked about doing, that would be a violation of various education laws and regulations, even if an individual were not found to be in violation of the Code of Ethics. So they just kind of felt that incumbent upon themselves to, kind of little drop that little remark there. Next. Can a board member post nonconfidential information? This is interesting. This is a board member who wanted to basically create a webpage, or a social media page, a Facebook page, and just put "nonconfidential," you know, kind of items of interest in the board, what's going on in the district, kind of like a newsletter. Nothing confidential. And this is, again, where it comes back to what I mentioned before, where even though you may have a disclaimer, there are circumstances where that disclaimer may be really useless. And they said, this would be such a case, because of your official duties and responsibilities, you could try to disclaim until you're blue in the face, that this is your own personal webpage, or whatever, and this is, you know, your own personal. Community knows you're a board member, and they would attribute any information coming from you in your capacity as a board member. So yes, you have a right to, you know, say things publicly, but you have to be very, very careful that there's not an appearance that those views appear to be written on behalf of or with the authorization of the board. So in that case, they said, don't do it. Very brief case law update, we'll try to get through this a little quickly. Board member attended an all-expense-paid conference by WASU, and was basically brought to the, was brought to the district's attention as a possible vendor. Although the ALJ found no violations, the commission determined that the board member did violate the statute, that he attended an all-expenses-paid conference offered by a potential vendor of the district, they recommended removing the board member. The commissioner agreed with the finding itself, but found that that was too severe penalty, and imposed a six-month suspension. So you have to be very careful about accepting these, you know, all-expenses-paid trips from some entity that may be a potential vendor to the district. Next. This is, an allegation was made that the board members violated the Act when they made anti-Israel and allegedly anti-Semitic remarks during a virtual public board meeting. The SEC acknowledged they were highly controversial and likely perceived as offensive and hurtful, but they did not result in any action that could compromise the board. They had, under policy, the right to express their personal views, if they made it expressly clear that they did not represent official board policy. So the SEC found that that was not an Ethics Act violation, and that was affirmed by the appellate division of Superior Court. Not that I'm suggesting people do that, but they found it was not an Ethics violation. Essentially, what they've said is, it's up to the public to deal with that by determining not to reelect that individual. Fable case, the board member conducted a personal investigation. Okay, here's another one where you're basically going off and acting on your own, and doing something that's your administration's role and not yours. So the board member looked into the cost of computer equipment by contacting vendors without authorization for the board, and was trying to, you know, do a good deed in a sense, you know, but that's not your role as a board member. And she took official action to effect her policies and plans, she didn't consult those affected, contacted vendors, she had no authority to do any of that. So she was censured. Next. Ellis Foster. This was one where a board member sent an email to members of the state legislature expressing his personal agreement with mask mandates. That was found to have the potential to compromise the board, as legislatures and public may view the statements as the board supporting a call to action against the mask mandates. So reprimanded for that one. Recupero. Board member violated multiple sections by acting as the chief proponent of a plan to eliminate the Columbus Day holiday from the district calendar. That in and of itself was not a problem, that, you know, you have a right as a board member to seek to make those kinds of modifications. The problem was that this board member met privately with complainants, and that was found to be a violation, because the board member did not refer the complaints to the superintendent, met with people, and essentially undermined the administration's authority to potentially resolve or address the concerns. And this became a very, very controversial issue in the district, resulting in some very long and heated board meetings. So it was really a huge public outcry over the motion, and then the board's subsequent actions. So it was incumbent on the board, not the board member, to publicly discuss and explain the rationale. So the board member was basically reprimanded for that. Next. A quick quiz. I'm not going to ask people to actually answer these, but you can just think to yourself whether you think it's true or false or not. This goes back to what we talked about before. This was where some board members were charged with violating the Code of Ethics by not voting in favor of the public health education curriculum. That was not a violation, because as I mentioned, there was no finding below, which is a prerequisite by the commissioner of education or the courts, that they had, you know, broken the law essentially. Next. Violated section of the code when he attributed poor reading results on teachers by stating, I know the conversation started with the high school ranking. Our students have been, you know, there's something, it would indicate to me there's something wrong with our teaching staff. That was not a problem, because there was not really a criticism of the staff directly. Yes, sometimes these can be rather fine distinctions that are being made here. But in this particular case, they did hold that there was no, no staff members were singled out. There was no direct criticism, there wasn't a statement that teachers were failing with students. They were phrased more in the sense of questions. So they held that that was actually okay. Next. Okay, personal post on the Facebook plane, says the cast of the complaint, and that language is right out of that decision, it's kind of awkward English, but. Served as a substitute teacher at the time in a negative light, alleged the substitute was removed from a position as a result of unspecified misconduct, which was not true, by the way. It was a false allegation. So again, you have the fact that you're putting out inaccurate information, plus you're specifically naming a staff member, and the commission had no trouble finding that to be a violation. You should never be discussing staff in public, ever. I mean, unless you're doing it in the context of a recommendation from the administration that you're voting on. A heated discussion ensued among board members. Spond attorney complained and said, do you want to get punched tonight? Say, are you threatening me? repeated, do you want to get punched tonight? It was not, you know, it was, obviously, it was really poor conduct, not recommended that you do that kind of thing, but it doesn't rise to the level of a violation of the Ethics Act. It's just, it's just people being people. So this was, I kind of wish I was at this meeting. So a board member asked the public to be mindful of the property decorum following a resident's use of profanity. Then posted on Facebook, speaking as a private citizen, it felt like we were transported to Appalachia last night, and the local dive bar closed early, so the patrons came to the board meeting. Everyone should have to wash their hair and jeans before they come up screaming and dropping the F-bomb, it was unsightly and nauseating. Again, you know, they had, the SEC had a lot of things to say about what you should or shouldn't say publicly. That's not necessarily something you want to be, you know, put it out there on Facebook, but it doesn't violate any of the provisions of the Ethics Code. Okay, this was, a board member applied to a parent from his official board email about information the board, the parent had sent. Parent had expressed concerns about a teacher's social media posting, and the same teacher had spoken about how the school staff returning to in-person instruction was not safe. So this was obviously during the pandemic, the height of the pandemic, and the teacher's talking about returning to in-person instruction was not safe, meanwhile, the teacher's gallivanting around Cancun without a mask on. So the board member replied to the parent and said he was appalled by the teacher's behavior, and the parent could expect a proportionate response from the administration. It's absolutely a violation. The board member had no authority or right to say that at all to the individual, should not be commenting on a staff, should not say that, you know, district administration is going to take any kind of a response to this. Well, all you can do is refer that on to the superintendent. Okay, a board member would violate the Code of Ethics by actively participating in initial and/or exit interviews? That is true, that you may not participate, because those are administrative functions. It's not the role of a board member to hire either an initial or participate in an exit interview. The Ethics Commission has said, almost kind of reluctantly, that one or two board members could monitor, not participate in, but monitor and watch an interview process in certain circumstances, but that you can't participate in that, because that's not your role. Next. Violation of the Act for board member to also serve as an exec officer of the PTA or any other PTA executive officer position? False. Is not a violation, you still have the right to serve as a PTA member or an executive officer. You just have to be very careful in doing so, that you don't accidentally say or do anything by virtue of role as a board member, that implies or gives the impression that you are taking some action or giving some authorization, or in some way, speaking on behalf of the board. But you still have a right as an individual to participate in the PTA. Next. Inadvertent reply all to an email, include not only the board, but the parent, who brought a complaint to the board. And then the board member said that he felt the board did not adequately address the concern. That's a violation. The fact that it's inadvertent, that it's a mistake, doesn't get you off the hook. The fact is, you hit reply all, and it went out to everybody, and you essentially, you know, compromised the board by essentially showing that there's a disagreement among board members in terms of how it was handled, and indicating, you know, some of what was going on. So you have to be very careful. I always suggest, don't ever reply all, ever. It's just, because sometimes you don't realize who's on that email chain. And just a quick, brief aside on that as well, not an ethics issue, but an Open Public Meetings Act issue, is if you get a quorum of the board involved in an elite in the email discussion, and you start, like, emailing, and I think, what do you think about this? And I think this, and I think that, and now you've got five or more members who are going back and forth, talking about particular board business. There's no cases directly appointed in New Jersey, there are in other states, and one of these days, there will be in New Jersey, but everyone is pretty much in agreement that that's a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, because what you're doing is you're conducting a secret meeting, essentially. It doesn't matter that it's not in real time and happening all at once, it's a serial meeting. So you want to avoid any kind of email communications back and forth, other than information, you know, like, you know, the superintendent can send you information, certainly. You can send questions into the superintendent, the superintendent can send answers out to the full board, but no back and forth, no discussions by email. Board member violated section E of the code when he unilaterally filed an action. He didn't like the way in which the matters, the superintendent's contract was renewed, and he brought an action before the commissioner of education. That is automatically a per se violation of the Act. You may not bring an action against the board, just because you don't like the way it did something. You have no authority to do that. By doing that, you're undermining the board, you're taking private action. Somebody else has to do that, but not a board member. So you can never do that. And finally, the bonus question. Some of the returning board members may remember this one. The question is, when can you review a staff member's files? A, with approval of majority of the board? B, without board input? C, upon notice to the board administration? Or D, if there's action pending, and the answer is D? There has to be some specific action pending, and even then, what the case law says is, you can't go on a fishing expedition. You can see the relevant documents, mainly the evaluations, and you can't let go to see if there's some other, like, dirt hidden somewhere in terms of that, and only if you're being asked to take an action as a board on that employee. That's the only time you see the personnel file. With that, I thank you all very much. If there's any questions, we can address them, or not, we can move on.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any questions? Just quick, round the horn. Anytime. Thank you.
If there's ever a question that comes up during the year, you can always feel free to ask me, and I could either answer it myself, but I will probably go to Paul.
Thanks. All right. With that complete, we are going to have our public comments section. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up in future meetings, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing none, public comments section is now closed. All right. I need a first and second to approve the consent agenda items this evening. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Just to note that the items that were approved were part of the organization of why we're here tonight. It's the acknowledgement that the board members received of the Code of Ethics, and were trained, a readoption of our board policies, designation of the newspapers that we'll use to publish our public announcements, our schedule of meetings for the remainder of the year, and the establishment of our board committees.
I just want to check, I thought you're here for a public comment, but I don't know if we understand what you're just about. Oh. Are you guys here for a public comment?
There'll be another one.
Oh, okay. There's a second. Thank you for that. Gotcha. Thank you. We'll catch them on the second. There's another opportunity. Oh, yeah, sorry. All right, all those in favor? We already did that.
We did.
Any?
I think we voted.
On the consent.
Yeah, we voted. We did.
Yes.
We did.
Trying to confuse me. And we are now going into second public comment. All right. Members of the public, again, are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up in a future meeting, so the matter is researched by the district. Just come to the podium, please, and if you'd write your name and municipality on the piece of paper.
My name is Tim. This is me of 30 seconds.
I was planning to take the American Mathematical Competition, but found out I cannot take the test in our school. So I need to take a one-hour-long trip to go to a math academy for the test. It is very inconvenient. So I hope our school district can serve as a testing center in the future. This will benefit a lot of students who are interested in math or STEM in general. Also, many of my friends are hoping Timberlane Middle School can start some math competition clubs, like Math Counts or Math League. This will make students think math is more interesting than it looks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Lin.
You can pull up the mic there. There we go.
All right. Hi, my name is Andrew Lin. I'm currently an 11th grader at CHS. I'm here to advocate for more STEM activities and participation in math and science competitions for Timberlane and CHS. This year is my fourth year coaching the Timberlane Math Counts team. Math Counts is the largest middle school math competition in the nation. Schools form teams of students that compete at the county, state, and national levels. I wanted to participate in Math Counts in 7th grade, but Timberlane didn't have a Math Counts program. With the permission of Timberlane, I rallied my friends and formed a four-member team to represent the school. That year, Timberlane got the best rookie school award. The following year, I was first place in New Jersey doing Math Counts. Since 8th grade, I have coached and organized our team. There have been many challenges due to a lack of school support. Because I don't have access to classrooms or dedicated teachers, we currently use Zoom meetings. They get cut off since I use the free plan. Garnering participation has also been difficult. In addition to relying on word of mouth, I collaborated with the parent-teacher organization to share information through the Wolf Flash. Unfortunately, many parents don't read it. I also lack funding to purchase practice materials or address the competition fee. Although I feel we could have done better with more support, my Math Counts program has thrived for four years, with over 40 participants overall. We achieved a top-half placement in the county last year against schools with longstanding Math Counts traditions. However, I'm realizing that I will be unable to continue running the program after I graduate. Given the interest expressed by younger students to continue participating in Math Counts, I request that the district consider sustaining the Math Counts program beyond my graduation. Beyond Math Counts, I want to advocate for improved accessibility to national competitions in math and science. National competitions provide a valuable platform for exceptionally talented students to showcase their skills. While I commend CHS Sports Math League, I urge the inclusion of national competitions like the AMC 10 and 12, the first step towards the U.S. International Math Olympiad team. I've had to register for test sites almost an hour away for the AMC 10 and 12 and the physics equivalent, which highlights the need for increased accessibility. Lastly, I want to advocate for an increased variety of STEM clubs. I noticed that Montgomery High School offers all the STEM clubs we have here, along with clubs such as aerospace, quantum computing, and science bowl. It will be wonderful if we have similar clubs in our high school. Thank you for your time.
Happy New Year to you all. I just have two questions, and I'm hoping maybe the board secretary can answer the first. Now that there is a vacancy on the board, can you share the process in which that role will now be filled? And then my additional question, and I just want to confirm, I see that board meetings are now beginning at 6:30 according to the agenda, is that for the entire year? And I just wanted to make sure, they used to be at 7:00, now that peers, they're 6:30?
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, public comments session is now closed. I'll defer to Dr. Therese and Dr. Plitzis to...
About the math competition, first, I want to congratulate both the students for your efforts and for your, for your tenacity with making those commutes, and for you organizing the club at the middle school, we thank you for that. I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Plitzis, though, because she has been looking at this, and we've gotten overwhelming response from the community that this is something that you want us to bring back. So she does have a plan that we're going to try to put into place to get these things up and running for you.
Okay, thank you. So just some background information, we did use to offer the American Mathematics Competitions years ago, and we, we went away from offering them just because we didn't have interest any longer. But, you know, we did survey K-8 parents to see who was interested in math enrichments, and so our tentative plan for next year is at the high school, we already offer Math League, but we are looking to offer American Mathematics Competitions 10 through 12. In the middle school, we were looking to host the Math Kangaroo and the American Mathematics Competition for Grade 8. We can also look into Math Counts as well. And then at the elementary, Mr. Wilfing, who is the principal in charge of STEM, will be exploring Math Olympads for grades four and five.
Thank you. We did look to see if we could bring them this year, but we had missed the deadlines to, to be sites for some of these competitions, but we're definitely going to bring them next year based on interest. Now, if we bring them back, you have to come, right? Because that's the reason why they, they stopped doing it in the past. So I'm going to pass this to the board secretary for the other questions for Ms. Hamm.
So yes, all the meetings are going to be starting at 6:30 this year, this was at the behalf of the board, the board was interested in starting a little earlier. The second question was, the board vacancy needs to be filled within 61 days. The advertisement will be going out, probably tomorrow, once we get the letter out, we're actually reacting, I didn't know this was going to happen. But we will be sending out a notice, and we'll be having, the board will be having interviews probably sometime in January, we haven't come up with a date yet, obviously, we'll be discussing that as a board, but any interested candidates will be able to submit their resume for consideration for an interview.
And who will they go to?
It'll all be in the, they'll come to me, my office.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, officially, public comment is now closed, I realized I closed it before We will not be going into executive session this evening, but I need a first and second to adjourn the meeting.
Both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, have a great evening, everyone, thank you for coming.